I'm going to move on to item 6.4, our 10:00 AM item, public hearing, A, consideration and presentation of the fire mitigation fees nexus study, and B, consideration of ordinance amending Article 1 of Chapter 27 of the Lake County Code, fire mitigation fees. And we have Mr. Semenov, if you would like to come and sit on one of these chairs. Looks like Chief Cepeda will be joining you, and Chief Seansio coming up. And we have Ms. Purdy with us.
I am here to give a brief introduction.
Oh. And so let's go ahead and start this. I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Purdy.
Thank you, Chair Sabatier, and good morning. Carolyn Purdy, Administrative Analyst for the County Administrative Office, here to introduce this item for your consideration. Lake County established their fire mitigation fees ordinance in 1992. The ordinance was amended June 6, 2006, and allows for a fee ceiling of $1 per square foot of construction. Before you today is an amended ordinance to increase fees and update Chapter 27 of the Lake County Code. With us is Dmitry Semenov, consultant from Ridgeline Municipal Strategies. He will be presenting the fire mitigation fee nexus studies for Lake County. Thank you, Mr. Semenov. I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, and good morning.
Johanna, is it possible to share the presentation?
And I think before we go into the presentation, the chiefs have a couple of words that they wanted to say.
Please. That'll give us time to load up the presentation.
Yeah, I won't throw any acronyms in there today either. So just real quick on fire service of today, we're very equipment and facility dependent to maintain a continuity of operation. So as we look at current or future development, that is a build out of new stations to reduce response times and provide protection. Well, that requires, you know, additional personnel, equipment, a new type 1 structure engine runs about 800,000. Our wireline engines run about 650,000, and a ladder would run us about 1.5 million. An ambulance runs us about $300,000, and that doesn't include the equipment that we have to put in it. So, you know, the mitigation fees are to help us grow and support the community as we go. And the one thing about the Lake County Fire Chiefs is that we closed out 2023 with over 14,343 calls, so that was 39 calls we did every 24 hours with our responders. And we're very community oriented. You know, we do flood flighting, we do water shut offs, there is little to nothing that we do. During the COVID, you've probably seen a lot of our faces out there, we were very instrumental with working with public health to arrange for all the initial nasal testing. We set up vaccination clinics. There were times at the drive-in theater, we vaccinated over 1,100 people in a day. So we really don't have any borders. We really are an all-hazard type of department that is there to support our community in every fashion we can. We also do hazmat response from large spill fuel trucks. We had the one in front of Twin Pine about 15, 20 years ago. We had another one up here on Vista Point, respond to that, methamphetamine lamps, honey oil operations. And then we just acquired an offspray response trailer for $40,000 to provide additional protection for our waterways and our lakes. So I've gabbed enough, I'll turn it over to Chief Seansio.
Good morning. Yeah, I think, you know, part of it is, is like Chief Cepeda said, is we are not keeping up with the cost of creating new programs, and we're continually trying, expected to meet the needs, right? As our communities grow and everything else, we can't keep up with the cost of the stations, we can't keep up with the cost of the engines. Those astronomically, I've never seen them get so much higher in such a short amount of time. ISO ratings, we have to do an ISO rating, which is insurance office rating. Every five years or so, they come and evaluate your department. And, you know, as we walk down the road and go on longer and don't replace our equipment or add new equipment that's needed, your ISO rating goes down, which means every citizen's insurance goes up. So keeping up with the standards of newer equipment, things like that, is pretty important. And I would say, you know, we're all battling keeping employees, keeping things like that. We're keeping our stations are up. My stations are over 50 years old, every one of them. And how much longer can they actually last? And at a dollar a square foot, you're not even keeping up with the building costs. So it's important that we get this, hopefully can get this and understand that. We haven't met this in over 30 years, so it's kind of amazing that it's lasted that long. And so I'll leave it there for now, I guess.
Thank you very much. And before I pass it off to Mr. Semenov, I do want to disclose that I was told by one person that two of my colleagues already are in favor of this. I have spoken with our county council, that is not a Brown Act violation, but I wanted to disclose that because there was multiple people in the room, and just wanted to at least put it out there. But ready to move on.
All right. Thank you. Let's go into the presentation. So what our firm did is our firm prepared separate nexus studies for each five fire districts. And in this presentation, we'll talk about what's a nexus study, what are the legal requirements for the mitigation fees, how do they work, and what were the calculations? So first of all, what's a mitigation fee? Mitigation fee, it's also known as a development impact fee. It's a one-time fee that's imposed on new development as a condition of approval to pay for public facilities needed to serve new development. Okay? It's usually collected right around when the person is, you know, building a house, doing in addition to the house, to property, to a building, deals with vertical structures. And the way mitigation fees fit into the sort of the funding for public services is when Prop 13 was passed, it severely limited the public agency's ability to raise revenues. And now the reality is with inflation, with the costs, with how the services operate, pretty much all the property tax, which is more or less the main and virtually sole funding source for the fire service, is going towards covering the operations. And to make sure that the government agencies throughout the state have the capacity to acquire the capital facilities, to keep up the capital facilities, one of the tools that's been provided is the mitigation fees. There is a part of the government code called Mitigation Fee Act that spells out what mitigation fees are, what they can be used for, and how to calculate them. So it's really one of the key funding mechanisms that the law and the legislature put in place to make sure that our public agencies have the facilities that they need. Next slide, please. So definitions and uses. Here are some of the terms that we'll be using over the next few minutes. What is public facilities? Public facilities, when it applies to fire districts, includes fire stations and all other buildings. It can be storage, it can be administration, it can be, you know, parking structures, training centers, towers, different types of physical structures. Also includes apparatus and vehicles, fire engines, ambulances, trailers, anything that falls into the rolling stock category, as well as major equipment. And that includes technology, it includes furnishings, it includes all the things that go onto the apparatus, all the equipment that firefighters use in their service. So that's public facilities. So every time we talk about public facilities, it includes all those things. Development is all new private residential, non-residential buildings. It excludes public buildings, and it excludes accessory dwelling units that are smaller than 750 square feet. That's the legal requirement right now in the state of California. Impact fees cannot be charged on the smaller ADUs. So but pretty much it's all private residential and non-residential buildings, other than what's excluded. So mitigation fees can be used to expand facilities to serve new development. So really, the intent of the fees is to expand the fire protection system. And then mitigation fees cannot be used for maintenance deficiencies or operations. So it's really to expand the capital facilities of public agencies. Next slide, please. So as briefly was briefly mentioned, the mitigation fee ordinance was adopted in September of 1992 here at Lake County. It covers currently all five districts, Calseville, Lake County, Lakeport, North Shore, and South Lake County. So no significant updates to the fee program have been done since then, so it's been 31 years. The program set fee ceiling of $1 per square foot and did not include inflation adjustment provisions. So the program's been at the fee ceiling for a very, very long time. What has changed since the program was initially put in place? If you pull up the reports from the 90s, at that time, the districts were not providing the EMS service. And then the fire station construction costs that were cited in the, when the fee program was put in place, was $64 to $70 per square foot. Now we're seeing 600 plus. We're talking to some fire districts that are seeing over $1,000 per square foot, especially once you get into more complex terrain. Class A engine or pumper used to cost $200,000, $350,000. Now we're looking at $700,000. Water tender costs went up from $110,000, $125,000 to 400, and even over half a million dollars. So definitely, there's been a huge increase in costs for public facilities. Next slide, please. So in terms of what laws govern impact fees, there's the federal side, and then there's the state side. On the federal side, really, most of what we have comes from the Supreme Court decisions, which require the nexus to be established to support any type of mitigation fees. So what's a nexus? A nexus is a reasonable relationship. And the three nexus components that are set in place through the court decisions, that the development must create a need for facilities that are funded by the fee, so the need component. Then the development must receive a benefit from the facilities funded by the fee. And then the fees must be proportional to the impact created by the development. So need, benefit, and proportionality are the three components of the nexus that comes from the federal court decisions. On the state side, we have, as I mentioned, California Mitigation Fee Act, which is the part of the government code. And it really, it takes the three nexus components that we just talked about, and also adds two more requirements that altogether make up what we call nexus findings. So first of all, the nexus study needs to identify the purpose of the fee, needs to state the use of the fee, and then also establish and demonstrate the reasonable relationship between the use of the fee and the type of development on which the fee is imposed, so that's the benefit. The need for facility and type of development for on which the fee is imposed, which is the need. And then the amount of the fee and the facility costs allocated to development paying the fee. So that's proportionality. So that's the legal framework for the mitigation fees. Any questions so far? All right. So in terms of the adoption process, impact fees are imposed as a condition of development approval by land use authority. And special districts, such as fire districts, do not have that authority. And that authority lies with the counties and the cities. So counties may impose mitigation fees that benefit special districts. And then procedurally, it looks like the district's boards, they approve the nexus studies, review the fees, approve the nexus studies, forwarding them to the county. And now the county and the board of supervisors is considering the mitigation fees, and the next steps is adoption of the fees on behalf of the districts. So that's what's required for the fee to be updated in accordance with the laws. So the district boards, they approve the nexus studies, but then they rely on the county to actually adopt the fees and the program. So summarizing the five nexus studies, for each five fire districts, the following nexus findings have been made. So first of all, the purpose, the purpose of the mitigation fees within the county, fire mitigation fees within the county, is for new development to contribute its fair share of existing and future one-time public facility costs. The use of the fee is to fund expansion of, in addition to, the district's public facilities. The need is for the new development within the district service area, the new development within the district service area increases the need for fire protection and emergency medical response public facilities. The benefit is new development within the district service area benefits from the availability of fire protection and emergency medical response public facilities. And proportionality is fire mitigation fees allocate to new development its proportionate share of the district's existing and future public facility costs. So those are the five nexus findings that are required by the law, and they're documented in the nexus study reports. So now let's talk about the methodology. Methodology is important because as we're recently seeing, even in case of Eldorado County, if you're charging the fee, you have to be doing it right. And we went through great lengths to make sure that that's done correctly. And the fees are based on future development's share of existing and future public facility costs in accordance with the law. Separate calculations were done for each district. The way the program currently functions is it's one fee applicable to all districts. The Law on Mitigation Fee Act now requires that each agency actually does their own calculations and document their own fee program. So we did separate calculations for each district. Each district has a separate report that is specific to the development patterns within the district and the facilities of that district. So each district determined the fee structure and fee adjustments, if any, based on their specific development patterns and facility needs. In terms of the general methodology, how we went about it, the first step was to really determine what is the existing amount of development within each district. So we started with the county data set, and then we made sure that we're truly capturing all the develop, or as much of development as we can identify within the county. So we looked up manually a lot of parcels to make sure that any discrepancies that we could identify in a database were resolved, and avoid missing, you know, any significant development that should, you know, could impact the calculations. So we were, we looked at manufactured home communities, parcels that have mobile homes on them, we looked at the recent several years of development that's been documented, we looked at any discrepancies between the square footages and the assessed values in the data set, just making sure that we capture all development, as much of it as possible. Then the next step was to prepare development projections through 2040 for each district. Capital facilities planning is a, it's a long-term process, so we do want to make sure that, you know, we're looking at a reasonable timeframe in terms of how much development we can expect over the next couple of decades, as well as what facilities would be necessary to serve that development. And then the next step was for each district, prepare the existing facilities inventory, going through all their buildings, apparatus, equipment, making sure that everything's documented properly. And then looked at additional facilities that are needed through 2040 to make sure that the services, the fire services are maintained and provided. And then looked at what other resources are available to fund those facilities, which is the current amounts in mitigation fee fund for each district. And then took the net cost of the facilities after the funds that are available, and then allocated it across the board for the existing and future development, so we're not asking the future development to take the entire amount of the facilities, the costs been allocated to existing and future development, to make sure that the proportionality requirement is met. Any questions on the methodology? Okay. So this table summarizes the, you know, what we just talked about for all five districts. So the first line is the existing development, how many square feet of structures are within each district. So Calseville is 10.4 million, Lake County 17.4, Lakeport 10.8, North Shore 10.1, South Lake County 10 million square feet. So, you know, we're looking at close to 60 million square feet of structures that the five fire districts are protecting within the county. Then we looked at how much growth is expected over the next 18 years. And a lot of thought went into those projections. We looked at what have been the development patterns, what's proposed, what's realistically likely to develop. And we calculated about 1.6 million for Calseville, 1.5 million for Lake County, 1.1 for Lakeport, 900,000 square feet for North Shore, and 1.4 million for South Lake. That's over the next 18 years of development. So then the two numbers were added together for total development, and then we looked at the facilities, the existing and the planned, and subtracted the mitigation fee funds, and then calculated net facility costs. So that net facility cost for each district, that's what gets divided by the square footage that the district is serving, to come up with an allocation of cost per square foot. And that allocation came out to $1.47 for Calseville, $1.89 for residential, and $2.36 for non-residential in Lake County, $2.89 in Lakeport, $1.98 in North Shore, and $2.56 cents in South Lake County. So that's if you take the total cost of facilities divided by the total development projected through 2040, that's what you're getting. And that's where you start seeing that each district has a very specific and very different situation, and really, it's the right way to look at each district on an individual basis. All right. So once we've done those calculations, the next step is to look at what's happening within the region, the bigger area surrounding jurisdictions, in terms of the agencies that are updating their fees, where are they ending up with the fire, fire mitigation fees? So these are the studies that are the programs that have been updated in 2021 through 2023. So that's the kind of the most recent updates that we've seen. In Yola County, two fire districts, Espardo and Willow Oaks, they updated their fees, came out $1.48, $1.69 per square foot. The city of Wyreka and Siskiyou, $2.03 per square foot. Anderson Valley, CSD, and Mendocino County, $2.13 for single family, $2.54 multi-family, $2.14 retail and commercial, $2.87 for office. And then in Sonoma County, two districts, Sonoma County Fire Protection District, Sonoma Valley, single family, $1.75, $1.72, multi-family, $2.31, $2.91, retail, commercial, $1.95 for both districts, and then office, $3.20, $3.23 per square foot. So that's the, where the fees that are being updated in surrounding jurisdictions, that's the spectrum that we're seeing. All fee programs have an automatic inflation adjustment to keep up with the annual inflation costs. And then all fee programs have an administrative surcharge of between 2% and 4%. So with that information, we looked at the cost calculations, the cost allocations, and, you know, what's reasonable, what's necessary, right? And what's within the range of where, what we're seeing other agencies are doing. And based on that information, this is the proposed fire mitigation fees that the districts determined. Calseville, $1.50 per square foot, that, so all of these include the 2% administrative surcharge, so which, most of the cases, you go back to the calculated allocation, and you add 2% on top of that. So that's the difference between, for example, for Calseville, $1.47 allocation, $1.50, that includes the 1.5 cent surcharge for, I mean, 3 cent surcharge for administration. Lake County Fire Protection District, for residential buildings, $1.93, non-residential, $2.41. And then there's also, for them, as well as for Lakeport, there's a proposed surcharge of 50 cents per square foot for high-impact properties. And those are two types of properties, residential properties that are three stories and above, and, or, I'm sorry, all properties that are three stories and above, and then non-residential properties that are 15,500 square feet or larger. And the reason for that surcharge is both of these districts are considering acquiring letter trucks, which are necessary to serve that larger development. It's really hard to handle that with a, you know, with a basic fire engine. So you want, you need better equipment, more expensive equipment for that. And the way that was calculated is we looked at what's the difference between a type 1 engine and a letter, and then how much high-impact development are we expecting, right? And then if there was a full direct allocation, the amount would be 10 times what's being charged. But since the, those engines would be available to the district for other services as well, both districts decided that 50 cents per square foot is a reasonable, is a reasonable surcharge. So Lake County Fire Protection District, residential, $1.93, non-residential, $2.41, and a 50 cent surcharge for high-impact. Lakeport, $2 per square foot for residential, $2.45 for non-residential, and 50 cent surcharge. In case of Lakeport, their allocated cost was higher, significantly higher than made this decision to bring it down to be more in line with the, with our other agencies. North Shore, 202 across the board, and South Lake County, $2 per square foot for residential, $2.61 for non-residential, also reducing their residential surcharge to be within the range of other agencies. And so all of these fee programs included 2% administrative surcharge for mitigation fee act compliance costs. That includes updates to nexus studies, record-keeping, reporting, kind of keeping up with all the administration of the fee program. All districts include automatic annual inflation adjustment. It's calculated based on the engineering use and record building cost index, 20 cities average, which is the standard index for impact fee inflation adjustment. Fees apply to all new development, which is defined as all private residential and non-residential buildings and covered additions, and then certain exceptions for ADUs that are smaller than 750 square feet, and rebuilds, as discussed in the nexus studies. Additional high-impact surcharge, Lake County Fire Protection District and Lakeport Fire Protection District only, applies to three-story buildings, three-and-above-story buildings, and then non-residential buildings with over 15,500 square foot of footprint. And finally concluding all this is looking at how much the fee revenues is expected to generate for each agency, comparing that versus the planned facility costs and available funds. And then we see that even with the increase, each agency, each district will still have to do very significant fundraising to meet their capital facility needs. So mitigation fee, mitigation fees are definitely not funding all the new facilities that the district need to add, it's just helping them get there. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Ms. Purdy, did you have anything more to add?
All right. And one thing I would like to add is also, as a part of this, you're being asked to look at the entire fire mitigation fee ordinance with a lot of significant revisions. And Lloyd was really, really amazing at putting this together. We are trying to update the ordinance that's 30 years old, and a lot of things have changed in the laws. So a lot of those changes, they're, you know, to make sure that the ordinance fits within the requirements of the mitigation fee act, the practices that are used, and, you know, doing all the cleanup just at the same time with looking at the mitigation fees.
Thank you for that. Also want to check in with Chief Cepeda and Chief Seansio, any other comments before we bring it back to the board?
Yeah, you know, just a couple of things. You know, we look at the last 12 years, and we've lost about 65% of our county land mass and about 3,200 structures, and... and about 3,200 structures, and that threat's going to continue. We look at the new CAL FIRE severity map for the next 50 years. A lot of our growth is dependent upon acquiring fire insurance. So it's difficulty buying a home, selling a home, or building a home. And when you look at the insurance companies, they've dropped 72,000 residential policies and 42,000 commercial in the state of California. And that's kind of why, as a fire chief, we're trying to reduce our ISO ratings and do the defensible spaces, working with the RRA and Clerk and various to create these defensible spaces within our community. And so that's really a big thing. We look at the potential growth, is we need to get a handle on, really, the fire insurance portions of things. And just a little bit more on, you know, our community outreach. You know, we are all very instrumental in the Risk Reduction Authority and Emergency Medical Care Committee, and a variety of other things that keep the continuity of operations. So it isn't just us rolling out with lights and sirens. We all, as fire chiefs, belong to multiple different organizations within our community to keep things growing. And we do want to see that development. We just want to make sure that we have the resources to support that growth as we move forward. 85% of our calls are EMS, but our personnel are cross-staffed, so they jump from an ambulance onto an engine, onto a rescue, to perform that nest tax. So thank you for letting me speak.
Chief Seansio?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't think there's a person on this board who does not recognize and notice what our fire districts do for our communities. So thank you very much for what it is that you and your staff do out there. It's a necessity, not just a bonus to have you here. So want to open up Supervisor Green. Let's go ahead and start with you.
Thank you. Kind of a technical question, but important one, I think. So if I'm reading the bundle that's here, we have an ordinance we're going to be taking a peek at. Appreciate very much County Council's hard work in the districts on that. Looking good. On the NEXUS studies themselves, if I'm reading the structure right, they are structured to basically serve double duty and serve as the capital fire facility and equipment plan that must be adopted as part of this process as outlined in the revised ordinance. That said, there's still talking points in here that the new fees being imposed by the NEXUS study don't go to deficiencies, and basically old development has to be applied to new development. So my very cursory look, and I haven't drilled down a lot, I do see in the NEXUS study for Lakeport, and I looked at the others, it's all in there, same consultant, it makes sense that it's structured that way. There is indeed something that could and should pass as a capital fire facility and equipment plan in there. Where I'm struggling is to identify application of the fees to new development versus addressing deficiencies. And I'm looking particularly at rehabilitation of old station houses. So without a little more granular detail on that, I accept that for the district purposes as a whole, these capital fire facility and equipment plans are right in line with what I think would be passed on an annual basis. I don't know for a fact that it's granular enough to parse which funds would be applied to deficiencies or existing operations, and those that would be covered under the NEXUS fee as new activities or new capital improvements or something like that for which those fees are being collected. So can you speak to that particular methodology?
Sure. So in terms of the facilities plan, right, that's the requirement in the law, if a larger agency has to prepare a much more involved document, and the larger agency is defined as a population of at least 100,000 people. So the fire districts are allowed to use the NEXUS study as the facilities plan. And in terms of the kind of deficiencies, that's the one thing that the NEXUS studies do not include. We do not include the cost of upgrading the facilities. We look at what's the existing value of the existing facilities, and then what additional facilities need to be added to the system to properly serve the development. So it will be up to the districts to identify funding to upgrade their facilities. From the standpoint of the mitigation fees, they have to be kept separately from all other revenues of the district in a separate fund, and they can only be used for the expansion of the system. And an annual report is required to be provided on what fees are being collected and what the fees are being used for. So that's the procedural requirement of the mitigation fee act. Is that what you were asking?
It sounds like there's big agency, small agency. So I'm not aware that there's any particular call-out, at least not in the budgets I've seen, that distinguish between funds allocated for existing operations and those intended for expansion. For example, in Lakeport, we're talking about ladder truck, maybe that's an expansion that would based on this three-story apartment complex that may or may not show up. Also using Lakeport as example, we had a tax measure a couple of years, Measure M, again, was intended to, you know, bolster and provide new services as opposed to supplanting existing services. And it's not necessarily on the consultant or this NEXUS study or the ordinance we're addressing here today to make sure that we keep those lines clear. But I can just observe it maybe our existing financial accounting structures. We haven't been able to parse that out very well to date. So that's not on you or the ordinance, so.
But one thing to keep in mind is the fee can only be used for the expansion of the system. So replacing an existing engine or replacing a roof on an existing fire station, that's not an acceptable use of the fee. Adding an engine in addition to what the district already has, or adding an ambulance, or building a new station, that is an acceptable use of the fee. So it has to be very clear expansion of the existing system. And then, as we discussed in the analysis, is the fee is not covering the full amount of the expanded facilities. It really supplements, and the districts still have to do additional, you know, looking for funding to cover the gap.
Any further comments or questions?
So I have some questions. First off, it's been way too long. 1992 was a vastly different time, different costs, so it's obvious that there needs to be an increase. And as far as the list of needs that our fire district needs, they're the experts, they're the ones who know what's needed in their communities based on the service calls, so I'm not going to hash out any of those things. I do have some questions regarding what did or did not apply to the methodology, and I spoke to some of those things to you today. One is, I know that we are working on, and I know it's also being worked on in Hidden Valley Lake, and I know it will have a benefit to the fire districts, but I don't know if it has impact on this NEXUS study or future NEXUS studies. But if our flashes systems come to life and provide some assistance to our fire districts to be able to fight fires, does that look at potentially decreasing the anticipated projected costs that the fire districts have placed in the NEXUS study as far as their needs to be able to provide support for the communities as we see a growing development?
I would defer the question to the chief.
Not knowing what that's going to look like, you know, when you look at over the 18 years, what that's going to propose for us is that, pardon me as fire chief, we are going to look at strategically placing our new facilities to accommodate that. So I'll take my district for instance. If they build out the airport property, that's going to be our new Station 71, because that's going to be a bigger population, a higher call volume, and we want to reduce our response times, you know? So the Lower Lake Station will cover the Lower Lake community to Anderson Ranch Parkway. Station 71 will take Anderson Ranch Parkway to Olympic Drive, and then our main station will then cover those areas. And the cost of a new station's going to be $6, $8, $10 million, and then the additional Type 1 engine, wide-line engine, medic unit equipped and staff, and the infrastructure for that. So I don't think there's going to be a big enough offset to really change what our NEXUS studies. And our only funding is our property tax, our direct charges, and what we get off of our EMS billing. And so there is no sales tax. We do a lot with grant funding. We've done a very successful, all the fire chiefs have acquired new equipment from the assistance of firefighters. There's intergovernmental transfer funds that are non-sustainable, but they're clearly earmarked just for our EMS supplies and equipment. And that durable medical equipment, we try to turn it every five or seven years. So I just can't see there's going to be enough of an offset that would change our NEXUS study requirements, because we're still going to have to have a tremendous amount of offset funding to support that.
And I appreciate the response. I was thinking that there would be more of an indirect or possibly direct connection to South Shore or to Lakeport, since that's kind of the identified areas. So definitely not for the Lake County Protection District, because you'd be so far away that the impacts would be minimal to none. But I know that we're working on our end to try and provide some extra safety for the community. Just checking in to see if that would, if it came to fruition within the next five years and you start working on the next NEXUS study, would that have an impact on possibly limiting the next potential increase at a NEXUS study? It's kind of where I'm going to as to what can we do to help with some of the things that you need, because we are working on some things in parallel. My next question, sorry.
I would say that if there is a, if that project ends up reducing the need for additional facilities, that's where you would see the impact on the amount of the mitigation fee. So if, let's say, you know, because of this project, the districts or a district needs less engines, for example, or they don't, now they don't need to build a new station, that's when you would see the impact on the fee.
Okay. Thank you very much. Another question is, is there, so this was initiated about a year ago. The study was provided to the Chiefs Association meeting around November or December, I think, for the first time. Is there an expiration date on the study itself, on when it can be applied or not applied?
There is really no expiration date. What we're dealing with is the inflation. So the studies are based, use the 2023 costs for facilities, and the further we get away from it, the more inflation is eating up. So the plan was, the hope was, I guess, when we started the process, is early this calendar year, get the fees in place, and then have an annual inflation adjustment starting in July to bring us up to $20, $24, and then et cetera. Well, now, the adoption cycle, even if you adopt the fees today, it's still a 60-day period before the fee, the amount goes into effect. And at that point, we're past July 1st. So my understanding is all the districts have made a decision to forego the inflation increase for 2024, just go with the fees that are proposed, and then have the first inflation adjustment in July, on July 1st of 2025.
Okay. Which is what it states in the either ordinance or the resolution. I forget which one it was. My next question is, can fees be reduced without the need of a new NEXUS study?
They can.
Okay. And then you spoke to the CPI. We still have in there that there needs to be that annual thing. It's been a dollar forever, every single year before March 31st that we see those come in. So the CPI right now, if approved as is, would be automatic, but there's still the need for the resolution to come to us on an annual basis, which would then also make a request to approve the CPI increase?
Maybe, I don't know, Lloyd, if that's something you can speak to.
Because it still has a March 31st date of something that needs to be submitted to the Board of Supervisors.
I think my understanding, and maybe Lloyd can correct me, is the districts still have to provide you with the information, and they still have to pass their own resolution. You don't need to bring it to the public hearing to adopt it. It's the, your ordinance has the automatic inflation language in it. But it's only if there is a revision of the fees, that's when you would be considering them, but.
Yes, so the proposed ordinance, as currently drafted, proposes to establish an automatic annual inflation adjustment without further action by the board. And that adjustment commences on July 1, 2025.
And so what's this March 31st date that's still in our ordinance, that it just needs to be submitted to us from the resolutions approved by the districts, but not brought to the Board of Supervisors?
That may have been part of the amendment, or what is being proposed to be amended, not sure. I'm currently looking for that.
I'm on page four of the ordinance. Sorry, I don't know what section it is. Section 27-7D by March 31st of each following of the year. Agency shall submit a copy of a new resolution. So they're still just supposed to submit what their boards have approved? And that's it?
Yes.
Just wanted to check in on that. The, I noticed that for the cities, there's, there used to be a separation. Now everything's been simplified so that it's all the same rates, depending on if it's single family, if it's multifamily, and so on and so forth. And I guess my first question would be, why not ADUs? Is that a state law that doesn't allow us to do that? Because there's a lot of laws that have really simplified the ability to build ADUs.
Correct.
ADUs creates a higher-density situation, which obviously means potentially more harrowing situations if there's a fire in the area. I'm just kind of curious, why not for those? What was the reason?
The current state law prohibits collecting impact fees on ADUs that are smaller than 750 square feet. So if the law changes, then those units will become subject to the fee. But currently, there is an exemption in place at the state level.
Well, that's not helpful. And so I will, on the ordinance, I'll give my two feedbacks on the ordinance. We do need to implement the North Shore costs, because it's left blank right now in our ordinance. So I'd like to make that amendment. I think it's 202 for both the residential and non-residential. Right now, it's blank. And also, what was the other part? The other part where it amends the fire mitigation portion of the, I guess the whole thing is the fire mitigation portion, but the exempt mitigation portion. We had amended that in May or June of last year due to the dry sheds and the dry sheds having power. And so we changed the, I don't have the exact language in front of me, but right now it says agricultural buildings requiring an exempt building permit, and it just stops. But we had put agriculture buildings requiring an exempt building permit if no power source is available, that it would be exempt. I don't have the exact language in front of me, but I know that it was changed. It's not updated in our Muni code. And so that would be why we kind of started with this template, because we did not do the updates after approving our dry sheds. And so I want to make sure that we don't eliminate that, because that's been a conversation I've had with the fire districts, that we have ag-exempt buildings that are getting powered and are somehow sneaking around the fire fees. And so I want to make sure that stays in there, so we don't have that situation occurring again in the future.
And I definitely support that. I was going to bring that up after, too. So I got a question on those agricultural buildings. They burn just like anything else, and they're usually out in the field and those other things, and would like to have that conversation of, do we continue that? Well, that's, so anyway, sorry.
No, no worries. And my last thing is, and I'll be brief on this. I wanted to put together a meeting regarding just overall developer fees. The fire districts have not increased their fees since 1992. We have to do something to try to keep you guys up great, updated, so you can get the equipment and the facilities you need to keep protecting our communities. What I worry about, it's all of us put together these fees. We all live in separate lanes to do our jobs, but when it comes to development, we all share one lane. And school fees are $4.79. They have the ability to go up to $5.17 as of January 24th of this year. We're looking at potential CPI increases for the fire district, if this is approved as is. We have water districts and sewer districts that are also on CPI increases. And when you start looking at the affordability of housing development, it is just going away. And I worry about two things. One, either A, we will only be seeing one type of housing that's being built in our community, which can be afforded, and that's through tax credits and other things, which would be low-income housing. We need low-income housing, but when you look at our actual list of what we need, we need workforce housing, more than anything else in this community. And I worry that we've had two fire district, I want to say measures, I don't know if it's the right term to say tax measures. the right term to say tax measures, but that have been denied, both for Kelseyville and North Shore, which puts them, again, behind, more so than they should be. We just had a school district get denied for their bond. And I think that the appetite is not there to continue asking more from the public. And how are we going to make sure your revenues remain what they should be so you can get those ambulances, so you can get those facilities, so you can get your fire trucks? And I was hoping to engage and have a greater conversation about, we're doing the same thing we've always done, and it worked at one point, but it's no longer working. And I would really like to, I've never seen or heard of all of those who have developer fees coming together and having a discussion, saying, how can we make this work? And I'd really like to put that back together. I was asked to pause, which I did, so that I can have that conversation here at the board to get consensus that there is a need for this conversation. Not to say this is what you need to do. We need to look at ourselves and we need to ask everyone to see what is possible for us to change so we can maximize the revenues and not limit it. And I'll just give one perfect example. We can raise the fees all we want, but in 2022, I know Lucerne District, Unified School District, only collected $4,700. And at $4.79, that means we had 1,000 square foot being built. You can't build a fire station if that's the way that it continues and it's only making things more difficult as everybody, not just what we're talking about here today directly, keeps increasing their fees. And so I would love to have that discussion and engage to see what can we do differently to make sure that we all maximize. And whether that's what type of housing are we incentivizing? Right now, it's just residential or non-residential. I appreciate the surcharge of the 50 cents. So if you have a giant Walmart type of facility that comes in, you get that extra 50 cents. But not separating single family versus multifamily. I know it simplifies everything, but it also puts everything in the same box. And not sure that we, at least from the county perspective or my perspective, can meet the vision of where we would like to get in the next 10 years as we keep going in the direction that we're going. And so I would love to engage in that conversation to better figure out, how can we do better to help you to make sure that you can maximize your revenues and that we can also reach our vision of what we would like to see our communities to look like? And I'll end it there. I believe Supervisor Simon.
Go ahead, Jessica.
Thank you. This is off topic of what the agenda item is, but we did have our housing development strategy adopted this fall, or this winter. We have a lot going on there, and that is the appropriate place for these conversations to happen. That is important when we talk about the housing designation, the housing strategic plan, the, the portfolio we need to develop. So that is happening, and I don't want to lose sight of that work that we've already done and make sure that we're being methodical in that lane. So I am supportive of the fees today. That's what we have before us. As we look at development, that's people moving into our community. That's growth that we're going to experience. And we've already been through a lot as a community in every single one of our fire districts. This is not something that we can put off any further. So I know that you all put so much time and energy into this and a lot of your precious resources. So thank you for doing this. Thank you for bringing it today. And I am 100% in favor of moving forward.
Yeah. Supervisor Sabate brought it up, making sure that we cover those agricultural buildings that, because we do know that people are trying to get around paying those fees. And you want to support the agricultural community, but just as I said, those buildings burn like anything else, usually filled with hay or other equipment. You know, and we're talking about those things. I want to make sure that we do kind of close those loopholes. I don't know how to do that, but maybe just as we said, saying it has electric or it's, you know, got power to it, that we add that in today. Also, just wanted to have a discussion on C down here on exemptions also. You know, being all the devastating fires we've gone through and everything, I was just wondering if the board would have an appetite to look at that, you know, the one year application, you know, getting your application in to rebuild your home in one year. I think it gives three years after a local emergency is declared. But we've experienced it takes longer to rebuild than that. If, if there's an opportunity to talk about extending that to maybe three and five years, just because that's a reality. That's a reality of the Valley Fire, Clayton Fire, you know, let's go through all 18 of them, you know, as we, as we do that, we probably still have folks that haven't rebuilt from the Clayton Fire, you know? So understanding that, that was just something I wanted to bring up with the exemptions. You know, I, so I was just thinking about year changes, you know, I thought three and five years were more realistic. I know that we run into issues where folks don't rebuild at a certain point, and I know we cut those things off once we had emergency declarations that were, you know, we rescinded them. But I think there's, you know, given that opportunity, it's stressful enough to go through that. And we have a board member that went through that and many other family members. So I don't know what the appetite of the board is, but at least extending that, you know, to two years, I would even be happy with that after the fire happens and maybe five with the local emergency. I know it creates other issues, but it also, one less thing to worry about a timeframe in the midst of rebuilding your life. So I.
Yeah, I'll respond to that. I, I think it makes sense for a local emergency for two years. Again, this is getting started on the project, not necessarily finishing it. It gets really hard after three years when you've got people that are possibly relocating or not coming back. But I, maybe that's a conversation for another day. But the one-year timeline is really difficult when you're dealing with trauma.
I just think anything we could give them with a little bit more, more time to get it together. Because housing costs increased at that time. We saw it after the Valley Fire. It just exploded, you know, with the housing square foot costs to rebuild.
Well, the compounding effect of other fires around the other counties and workforce leaving, there's a lot of issues there.
Yeah.
Chief Seans, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, I don't, I'm only going to speak for North Shore in this, but if we have someone who was burnt out, whether it was the ranch fire or even just a regular structure fire or whatever, we don't charge them fees. So if the footprint's going to be the same, whatever, we don't charge them. So they're not getting mitigation, mitigation fees for those to rebuild their homes and things like that. If they, if we can prove that they paid mitigation fees initially and then they're going to increase the size of their home, okay, we, that, that increase is charged, but not, not the, the normal, what they were in.
And mine was just more for the timeframe, you know? So maybe the one year to the two year after the year. I would agree with that. We all went through it. And, you know, a lot of folks did build bigger, so they had to pay some mitigation fees as they did that. We all had to turn in our site plans, those types of things, you know, because we all lost homes. Our, you know, our family grandfather's home burned down and had to get that rebuilt. It was a challenge. So appreciated the school wave and the fees and everything. So I just bring that up to that effect, to give folks a little more time.
Yep.
If the board's interested.
Interested in the conversation. Not sure that I agree to the change itself, but definitely want to make sure that people have the chance to be able to get their stuff back together and be able to organize themselves enough to start approaching our community development and start rebuilding. That does take some time to deal with the aftermath of those unfortunate tragedies. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, question possibly for the chiefs and the consultants. So the fees are supposed to go toward new stuff, but the fees also can be expended for a share of cost of the new development on existing facilities, if I'm reading it right. I don't want to characterize all our districts the same, but it seems we're all more or less in that, in that latter category, where we have existing facilities. What new development is going to come onboard is going to be anticipated to serve by those existing facilities and equipment. And so the collection of the fees is appropriate and the expenditure of the fees on those existing capital assets is, can be appropriate. And that's unlike, for example, if there's a big development in South County and we're building a new fire station and maybe one or two fleet vehicles to go with that and staffing, that's, that's clearly new development tied to the new expansion. But historically, these are not, there's not a lot of expansion going on in Lakeport, I can tell you that. And probably not a lot of expansion on the North Shore. That would lead to instant consideration of new stations and new, new vehicles based on a new population center. So I get that there's a limitation. You can only put it on new equipment and facilities. But by necessity, it looks like we're backfilling into our existing facilities and equipment and doing vehicle replacements. So help, help, help walk me through that because what the, what the law states, we're collecting this fee to basically put in a, in a kitty and fund expansion. The funds would probably not be adequate in any given budget year to do much expanding. I guess there's no there there for me.
I, I want to make sure we're not getting into the territory of micromanaging the district's budgets.
I just want to make sure we're collecting fees for a stated purpose, which is for new and expanded services, not for backfilling existing services. And I'm not aware that the, either the level of development that occurs in most of our districts is adequate to do much expansion or capital improvement. I think it is more likely, and I want to make sure we are appropriate when we pass these impact fees, knowing that probably there's going to be some backfilling involved. And it's necessary. Share of cost for existing facilities from new development is appropriate, but it's unclear to me what the funding and accounting mechanism is that distinguishes, again, this equipment, capital, facility and equipment plan. It's in there, it's in the Nexus Study, but it isn't really tied to any particular level of new development, and it's not tied to any level of new equipment that's being proposed for purchase. It, it looks like it is intended to do some backfilling, and it may be totally okay for that. I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page on that.
So, good. No, please.
So what we're doing in our Lower Lake Station, when in 2017, we passed measure, one of our measures to staff with one. So we're going to be moving to move two people in our Lower Lake Station. So it's going to be $300,000 to expand that small little area that's a small sleeping quarters into accommodating two staff 24 hours a day, you know? So we do have growth within our stations to accommodate the infrastructure. Our computer infrastructure has to be updated to accommodate the new state and federal reporting systems, which are a huge expenditure to us, as well as the annual IT that comes out of our general fund. So we're really limited, but I think all of our departments are growing, not in a rapid growth, but the small amount that we get on the development doesn't cost for the upgrades of what we're doing. And when you look at, you know, over 18 years, what that's going to generate, that's not even going to really more than maybe cover a fire engine if everything were to grow accordingly. So we look at grant funds and our general fund cutting and doing different things to make those additions to our stations or to buy that new apparatus or the new medical equipment that comes out to provide a better medical care to our, our community members, you know? So we, we struggle with robbing Peter to pay Paul in, in lack of better words, but I think that the amount that we get incrementally doesn't cover, nearly cover the cost of what we're doing within our facilities to make sure our communities are safe.
And I think in each Nexus Study is, it equates to, here's the projections of what the growth looks like, and here's what the need will look like, and then identifies what the equipment and facility needs are. I, I don't disagree that there's no, that there's an auditing process of how those fees are spent, and that's not up to us. That's a different, it's either the state or someone else that keeps track of that. All we're looking at is, is the Nexus Study the appropriate methodology? Is it appropriately done? And are these the numbers that should be approved? And I think that everything else is not really in, under our control. Once the money is in their hands, it's, it's up to them to spend it appropriately based on state law.
And our financial analysts, you know, whether it be Michelle or Christina or Gloria or Maya or Promise in Lakeport, their checks and balances every day done, and we go through a variety of different audit processes to make sure that we're audit-worthy with every dollar that goes out. So for our financial staff out there, they're the ones that keep the fire chiefs out of hot water because we're not very good financially. But the checks and balances and the appropriate usage of those funds, they're monitoring for us day by day. I guarantee it.
Any other comments? And just to respond to my colleague Supervisor Pisca, I do think anytime that we talk about developer fees, it's appropriate to look, look at the bigger picture and identify what concerns to future visions that we have and how they impact that. Yes, we do have somebody working on those things, but I'm expressing myself on my concerns because I'm highly concerned when you start talking to developers, when you start looking into the costs, they are prohibitive. And it doesn't, in my mind, reflect the vision that we have of where we're going. And again, this has nothing to do with the fire fees. It has to do with all of the fees put together. You guys are the last ones to the finish line and wish that you had done this every five years in the past, but I know you will from now on because you have an eight-year maximum with a recommended, recommended every five years.
But one of the things that, that all of us have done is that we need to be able to trend where we are. And so, you know, with all of our staff trending back five years, realizing that if we continue down that pathway, we're not going to make it much farther. So we are always the last to the finish line because we need to validate what our needs are. And it's been such a fluctuation from the beginning of the pandemic until now. And then you look at what that did over five years trending, and then those same numbers five years down the road. It's pretty scary for, for us as community leaders to be able to survive.
And just a quick addition, one of the things that we talk about when it comes to fire safety, which I think would also be for EMS safety, is those who are developing in the WU, in the Wildland Urban Interface. And to me, that should be something that we don't incentivize and have a surcharge on something of that kind so that we can get people in our community growth boundaries. We can get people to remain inside our incorporated cities because that's where they're going to be the safest and have the quickest access to those services. The more we don't disincentivize that, the more we're going to have burdens of how do you reach such a broad community versus a much more contained community. I see no further pens up, so let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I believe we have one already.
Yeah, good morning. My name is Mike Wink. I'm here for the South Lake County Fire Protection District. And I just had a question. You guys had Supervisor Sabate and Supervisor Simon had really good dialogue about structures, whether they do or do not have power and whether they have power or not. Supervisor Simon mentioned that they all have a potential threat of catching on fire. So I just was wondering if I get clarification. Sometimes we see projects come in that have a lot of square footage of structures. And so we give comments on projects based on a structure is a structure, whether, you know, if it can catch on fire, it needs to have defensible space, it needs to, is it going to have mitigation fees, is it not? And I wonder if you could just clarify, you know, it's, it seems like if you get a building permit for anything more than 120 square feet, then it's a structure that could catch on fire. But I hear that maybe some structures are not applicable. I just was looking for clarification for when I'm reviewing permits.
Yeah, the ones that we were specifically speaking about was ag-exempt structures, where right, at least within the ordinance that we have here, it just says ag-exempt structures are exempt from fire fees. We had changed it to they're exempt unless they have power source or they're exempt without a power source. But once you have power there, we had changed it because of the dry shed ordinance that we had passed for cannabis, that that would apply for fire fees, no matter what the square footage is.
So if the ag commissioner says this structure is ag-exempt, that'll be part of the application and be identified in there that these are not, these are ag-exempt and these are not.
I can't speak to that specifically because sometimes I think in plans, people plan out really well early and have everything there, and others kind of piecemeal and add something later on after the fact. And so I don't know when or what the process is for you to receive that.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there's somebody who can speak to that. CAO Parker.
I don't wish to speak to it, but I would recommend that he reach out to Director Turner in Community Development, and she'll be, will give you more clarification and clarity.
Thank you for that. Let's go ahead and continue public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Please come on up.
Hey, everyone. David Claffey, Cleric City Council. We had this conversation a couple of weeks ago with Chief Sapeta and Mr. Semenov. Development was a big issue for us as Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Sabate. Simon and Supervisor Sabatier know, the city of Clear Lake has been pushing hard to grow. We are, as Supervisor Sabatier suggested, development in our, our city jurisdictions is, is ideal, and we've really struggled with that. Right now, depending on the size of the development, and we're mostly focused on single-family home, it's, it's about $40,000 to $50,000 before anyone picks up a two-by-four to build a house in the city of Clear Lake. And that's all the impact fees combined. This is the first time we've had something like this come up in front of our council. We have actively not raised our impact fees. We've had these conversations, and we've not raised our own city impact fees because of our concerns. We also have a program in the city of Clear Lake to subsidize some of these impact fees. It's called the Homestead Program. We put $40,000 aside for individuals looking to build market-rate housing in the city of Clear Lake. Even that program hasn't had a lot of success because the cost of building homes in California is high. What a home can sell for in Lake County is low, and if you're a contractor and you have the option to build a home in Clear Lake or in Santa Rosa, and you can make an extra $200,000, $300,000, you'll prioritize Santa Rosa over Lake County. So it's something, I think development is something that needs to be considered as part of the overall process, whether it's this, whether it's part of the, the housing conversation. We, as a city council, decided to pause our conversations with the fire department in hopes that the county could address this, talk about it more robustly. We don't have as much control as you all have, but it is a big concern for us, and I just wanted to raise that and, and let the conversation go where it may. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Mary Benson. I live in Lower Lake. I am a member of the Board of Directors for the Lake County Fire Protection District, but I'm speaking strictly as an individual today. My State Farm agent in Lower Lake told me four years ago that the cost to rebuild a home, he's seeing quotes, all the time, in the range of $375 a square foot. So I'd like to suggest that going from $375 to $377 a square foot is not going to be the determining factor as to whether someone's going to build or not. I think also Mayor Claffey's comments that the lack of success on the Homestead Program is showing that it isn't the fees that are driving these huge costs. I, in my day job as a real estate broker, I hear people complain about the cost of building with the redundant leach fields, the mandatory solar with the heavier roof sheathing, the mandatory car chargers and, and the interior sprinklers, and all of these things that cumulatively add up to drive the costs really high. And so I, I'm speaking in favor of your adopting this program, and I agree with Supervisor Sabatier to look at all of the fees together, but also look at all of the mandatory building code upgrades that are partly to blame for this. Thank you.
There are a lot of factors. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Is there anybody on Zoom? We have no hands in Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board. Any further comments or action?
I'll motion to approve the fire mitigation fee NEXA studies for each county of Lake Fire District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
I motion to waive the reading of the ordinance and read in title only.
Wait, sorry about that. We do need to make some amendments to the ordinance.
Yes.
Mr. Wintevano, if you can help us out with that?
So to your point, Mr. Chair, on, on the current proposed ordinance under 20, Section 27-7D, I believe there is a minor, a minor typo or typographical error where the clause subject to adjustments under Section 27-8 above was preceded by a period. I believe that's a comma in that draft. So that would be one amendment. And then to the point raised by your board, it's mainly located in Section 27-6, the exemptions provisions. We'll start with 27-6A2, where it makes reference to, as it's currently drafted, agricultural buildings requiring an exempt building permit. If your board wishes to amend that based on the current discussion.
Add it to the amendment.
Do we have the exact language of what we already changed it to?
The, at least in the Lake County Code, I went, it only goes as far back as 2017, and I went as far back as 2016, I believe, where there weren't any changes made to that subdivision, 27-6A2. But I am not sure if since 2017, if there have been any further amendments to, to that section, and that's what we're not clear on. However, your board does have the discretion to change that language pursuant to the discussions that took place. Your board, I believe, if I'm getting this correctly, could amend that subsection to state agricultural buildings, comma, unless it has a power source, comma, requiring an exempt building permit.
So I want to pause for a second. Ms. Purdy, did you have something you wanted to add?
Johanna shared with me there was an ordinance that came before the board in October for the building code, but it is the same exemption number, and it states agricultural buildings requiring an exempt building permit that are not connected to a power source.
So let's use that exact language. Thank you for finding that.
And then there was also, if I may, Mr. Chair, there was also some discussion on that same Section 27-6, this time in Sub C, where I believe if your board has the option of amending the clause within one year after the destruction or demolition of the dwelling, changing that to within two years after the destruction or demolition of the dwelling for your board's consideration.
It seemed like we had a consensus about that, so I'm, I'm willing to add it to the motion.
And those would be the amendments. The motion itself would be, as Vice Chair Crandall stated, motion to waive the reading of the ordinance as amended and read in title only. And I would add, I would suggest to add, suggest to add that to also as part of that motion.
And I do have one more amendment that wasn't mentioned. Section 27-8, under four, North Shore Fire Protection District, that the fire mitigation fees would not remain blank and that they would be set at $2.02.
They are listed on the attached ordinance.
I just opened it right here on my computer. How's that? That's weird. Okay.
Wouldn't have motioned it if it wasn't on there. You already, you already spoke to it, so I didn't have to earlier, so we're good.
So the, if I may, that, that, under this motion, it would be a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance as amended and read in title only, and also to approve the first reading of the ordinance as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Add one thing real quick. On behalf of the Fire Chiefs Association, we truly appreciate your continued support. We really do. So thank you again.
We still have one more thing to do.
We're not done quite yet. We have resolutions, I believe.
Okay. It's an ordinance amending Article 1 of Chapter 27 of the Lake County Code relating to fire mitigation fees.
And then I will motion to advance the ordinance to the next available agenda for the second reading.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.